Good evening. We welcome you here to our regular city council meeting. We call our meeting to order and note that we have a full council, a core impressive. Our opening ceremony tonight will be under the direction of Councilman Lang.
Would you please rise and join me in the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation with our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's see, special recognitions. I believe I saw a state representative here. Oh, there he is. And we welcome you here. We recognize all, any elected officials that come to participate. So we'll do some other things in just a few moments. Next, though, we need to make sure we get our minutes approved of January 6th to the council.
I approve for approval of the minutes of January 6th.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. You've got those noted and the motion is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, who will place it for a vote all in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed saying no. Motion passed unanimously. The minutes are approved. We now go to our awards ceremonies and proclamations, part of our agenda. And we next have the Employee of the Month award. We will turn to Councilman Lang for that.
For the January 15th Employee of the Month submitted by Kevin Ludd is Courtney Crainer. And will she stand up? We'll make as loud as possible. I would like to nominate, I would like to nominate one of our assistant court administrators as Employee of the Month. Courtney Crainer has been an employee of the city and court since May 2008. She has had many responsibilities since joining the court and a year ago was selected as a new supervisor. Courtney enjoys her responsibility and goes above and beyond to make her, to make sure her responsibilities are covered and done well. She does her best to make sure all of the other clerks she supervises are trained and doing their work well, and she makes sure that she communicates expectations and encourages others to do their best in their position. Courtney also does her best to make sure that the atmosphere at the court is positive as she tries to plan lunches, parties, and other activities to help employees here to enjoy coming to work. Courtney is also great at dealing with court patrons and those that require the services of the court process. She is patient and extremely customer friendly. She does her best to provide the assistance people need as they wade through the court process. Courtney is an example of doing great work and encouraging others to do the same. I recommend that she is considered as Employee of the Month and hope she is seriously considered as she deserves the recognition for her hard work.
Next, we have the Division of the Quarter Award for the Justice Court Administration and Councilman Beal.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll note that that Employee of the Month award was for January, which is not even part of this quarter, which is the last quarter of last year, which the Justice Court Division wins the Division of the Quarter award. And this nomination was also submitted by Kevin Ludd. I would like to nominate the West Valley Justice Court's Division of the Quarter. I have been at the court since February 2011 and have watched the clerks at the court consistently do great work and help the citizens of West Valley and others go through the court process with great customer service. The court is not a place where anyone wants to come. The reasons people come to the court or contact the court is due to something as minor as a seatbelt ticket and as major as criminal violations that are not at the felony level. Court employees understand that people are not happy to be here, and it is the responsibility of all the court employees to assist and help people go through this process. Our employees work hard to provide good customer service and help people with questions they may have about any and all aspects of the court system. Whether the contact with court patrons is over the phone, in the courtroom, or literally contact is face-to-face by our staff chairs or traffic coordinators, the clerks all do their best to serve those that come here by providing professional and polite service and information. At times, there's a tremendous amount of work to complete at the court, and every employee has been asked to assist in other major tasks that are outside their regular court duties. Much of the recent work this past quarter has been validating warrants as required by the state, learning new court software that assists with scanning and recording paperless, and every clerk has been asked to assist in major projects. I feel the employees here at the court go above and beyond to do their jobs well, and this in turn is a great service to the citizens of West Valley. I feel the court deserves to be recognized for their work as they represent the city. So we're giving this award to that division, ask everybody in the division to come up and shake our hands then. I'm sure Kevin wants to get a picture, so thank you.
a scout-related group come in. Okay. And traditionally, we put your scout on the spot to introduce yourselves, troop number, your school, so we get an idea of the general area of where you're from, that you attend, and then why you're here. See, there are a lot of choices.
Yes.
So come right up and speak into the microphone.
All right. So my name is Kalen Fernandez. I'm from Troop 1197, and that's in the Hunter area, so Hunter High School. I'm here coming just to, you know, fulfill merit badge requirements and kind of see what goes on here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome. And yes, I'm reminded, and it's good to make sure you're aware, everyone is welcome to stay, but it's not a requirement you stay generally, a lot leave at this point, and so it's up to you. But we won't be offended if you get up and walk out. Let's see. If so, we'd be offended every week if we walk out all of them when they're part of the program's done. Next, we go to our comment period. Now, I would note, if you are here to speak to application ZT 6 2014 or ZT 7 2014, there will be a separate public comment period for those. I'm assuming, let's see, we'll see who all, so if you're not here to speak on those and want to make public comment, Chris Howell?
Howell's.
Howell? Okay.
Howell's.
Howell with an S?
Yes.
Okay.
It's for one of the applications.
Okay. And Mr. Cox, same thing. Mr. Wright?
Same thing.
Okay. So we will not actually have any public comment period, but we will open that. Is there anyone else here to speak during the public comment period time? Seeing none. Mr. City Manager, any comments?
No, sir. Not tonight, thanks.
To the council, any comments? That part of the agenda went past. Now, we go to item number eight on our agenda. So that everyone is aware, these are issues that the council has discussed, had presentations on, been able to study in a previous council meeting. So we will now come to application ZT 6 2014. Let's see, I better get this. This is submitted by West Valley City. This is to expand the list of prohibited uses in the city center zone in our West Valley City Municipal Code, Section 7-6-1605. And so this is the one, see if I still have my paperwork here, where the number of items, the standards for all properties, where the following uses were prohibited in this cost center, or city center zone, and those were listed. There were a number of those that came up. Most of them were not much question, but for example, I think all the new ones, taxi cab, supermarket, secondhand store, tobacco store, private club reception center, funeral home, furniture store, dance hall, or dance studio, those types of things. Those were just a couple of examples. There is a much larger list. And the intent is in this city center area, which I believe is 35th, 27th, Lancer Way, and what was it? Can't remember what was 32.
32.
32. Yeah, about 32. Well, it was just this side of 32, wasn't it? Now, it didn't go all the way to 32. Seemed like it was 3150 or something. So that's the item. Now, with any further introduction needed there?
No.
Okay. Now, at this point then, we will accept public input and open a public hearing on application ZT-6 2014, amending the prohibited uses in the city center zone. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Mr. Cox, if you would come forward. I understand you're here acting as a, an architect representing an interested party.
Thank you. My name is Fred Cox. I am an architect. I live at 4466 Early Duke Street in West Valley City. One of the reasons that I am here is one of the properties that is in the CC zone that originally was not in the CC zone, and I did want to clarify that. If you look at the minutes from November from the planning commission, that was at one point clarified, but the zone changed. It originally was not on the north side of the street. My client, David Erle, well, one of the clients that I'm working with, David Erle, came, found out about the CC zone, found out what was going on there, and then he had received a notification. Well, he got a second notification a year or so later and did not understand that the boundary was changing to incorporate his property. I'm not necessarily blaming the city on that, but it's a fairly small zone and perhaps something could have been said, but he was not aware that all of a sudden those restrictions would apply to his property. My actual client is Firestone, and they have contacted me. They were interested in finally opening up their building just immediately north of the hotel. They had had a, an agreement with Mr. Erle for perhaps 17 different properties, including the one just north of the hotel. They already had a store near there at the mall and were planning at some point to open that store. Well, they finally did decide recently to get a business license. They had made the mistake, obviously based on where we are now, of letting that expire, and they could not get it. I was contacted, I found what I considered, if you will, a loophole in the current zoning. And if you look at your item, it's item number two, automobile service within a single-use building that is not part of a large non-automobile retail building. That sounded more like a Walmart or something like that, but it does specifically say within a single-use building. And so I said, well, if I talked to staff and I found out that different types of automobile service wouldn't qualify, but such as a subway or Verizon or something in there would make it not a single-use building. So I was talking to them, and then I found out that this was on the agenda literally that day with the planning commission, and I came and spoke opposed to it. Planning commission delayed their decision to another time. They came back and recommended those changes. I did send an email to at least one or two of you, and I believe that was forwarded. What I'm proposing is if you were willing to amend the proposal, instead of just saying "automobile service" with the rest of that item two crossed out, if it would say "automobile service within a single-use zone," that would allow the Firestone to meet as best possible the zoning requirements, add the additional landscape, fix up the building, onboard the building, but they would have to add additional uses in the building to even meet that requirement. And that is my hope, is that you would consider amending that. You will also recognize that there is an adjacent non-conforming property, immediately adjacent, that is already involved in automobile service, and there are a number of other uses that perhaps are not ideal. And eventually, with what happens with private property rights, things eventually go the direction that you want it to go, but they don't necessarily happen overnight. In addition to having five more years on their lease, I talked to Representative Firestone today, and they did say that their intent is to leave it boarded up unless they can move in. They do have options to extend, but they may or may not do that depending on what decisions are made, but they have no interest in fixing up the building and spending the money on the parking if they can't use the building themselves. And they are open to the idea, even though it wasn't their first choice or their second choice, to have other uses in the building. And they are aware of the zoning requirements and will, will work with that. So my hope, my recommendation is if you pass these standards for properties that are prohibited in a CC zone, that you will consider amending item number two to include the words "within a single-use building" and not cross those out. And that's my, my hope. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak to this? There are not. Then I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. We will come back to the council. And now it is before the council. The council, of course, will address this application by considering action on ordinance number 15-03, which will amend that section of the code. To the council.
Hi, Mayor.
Councilman Vincent.
As I was reading through this this week and going back to the discussion we had last week, I still have a lot of questions about some of these, and so I'll just list the ones that I have concerns about, and then I'll ask the question, if any of these are to come in the future, can they potentially get a non-conforming use? And I think we already got the answer that they probably can't, but, and I don't know who wants to address these, but I was wondering about why not convenience stores, why not the dance studio, why not a funeral home? Funeral home seems like a great fit. Martial arts studio, neighborhood grocery. So those were some of the ones I, and there's others that I probably have questions about, but those are the ones that kind of stuck out in my mind as to why we wouldn't want those in the city center zone.
And maybe I can make some comment to that, Mayor, if that's okay.
Mr. Pyle?
We could also call on staff as well. In fact, if I'm speaking out of turn and somebody else wanted to as well, I don't want to speak before anybody else in the council who would like to. But one of the main reasons that the increased restriction is being proposed for this city center, and again, I'll reiterate some comment that I made last week to the fact that from a general standpoint, it's not that we recommend or believe that these uses should not be allowed throughout the city. However, to this very specific, in this very small geographic area, there are a number of reasons that we're proposing that. One of which is, and this kind of goes to Representative Cox's comments earlier, is to uses that are already in the area, and of course, we're trying to encourage and define the city center zone by uniqueness and character. So the example of automobile service business, you already have, as was mentioned, Big O Tigers, for example, right there next door to that use. Specific to the uses that you mentioned, Councilman Vincent, is probably more germane to one of the other reasons that we're recommending that from staff and of course, that the planning commission made that recommendation as well. That is, some of those uses, many of those uses, if not all the uses that are listed there, are often, from a sheer economic standpoint, more likely to succeed or be attracted to or financially viable in what in the economic development sort of term we call a second or third tier sort of life cycle as opposed to a new or redeveloped property that we'd be looking for for new uses. So for example, two that came to my mind, as you were mentioning them, we had a convenience store, dance studio, and maybe even a third one, which actually did exist in the city center zone before we went through, acquired property, demolished, invested all these RDA funds and other funds into. And then we're looking for these, once again, sort of first tier economic development cycle uses, like a hotel, like the new apartments, other uses along those lines. So again, it's not that we would oppose or even think that those uses should not even be generally acceptable throughout the city, which of course they are, but specific to this particular application in the city center zone, they're not compatible, so to speak, with the original characteristics or design guidelines and ambitions that the council and the RDA boards had adopted in the city center zone that was originally put in place.
And if I may add, you know, my thought to that, Mr. Pyle and council, I look at all of these things, and I understand that, you know, I can envision one whether we wouldn't want in the city center zone, but I could also envision something very high-end exclusive that were prohibited, a crime club. You know, I can look at almost all of these and say, well, gee, if it was, if it was a real high-end exclusive kind of thing, it ought to fit right in here with the apartments and everything else that we're trying to do. And so I'm concerned that we're, and we're taking our preconceived notions of what is a fitness center, like a cool as a camel from a bike, and then saying, well, that would never fit here. And I'm wondering, then what does fit here? And we're taking everything out. And it seems like the market would drive those businesses away, that the rent would be too high, and the land use would be unavailable for them, and they can't have enough parking, and so, and then that the high-end similar uses could stay eventually. And I understand that we're developing something new and perhaps artificially propping up the market. I think we did that with the hotel. But I don't like doing it so broadly. But then it raises the next question. The next item on our agenda is to add a use that was prohibited, a secondhand store. We said no secondhand stores in this area, then a secondhand store comes along, we're a little bit different, and we're good, we want to be a secondhand store, and now we're going to consider making an exception for that secondhand store in that area, which isn't, I mean, it's brought up by a particular owner and a secondhand store and a particular name of the store, but it could really be any secondhand store that meets certain parameters. So if we did pass this ordinance or the ordinance similar to this, would we then potentially be looking at those same kinds of things? Though I'm different, I'm special, I'm, I want to be a different, I mean, would be taking those one by one? I presume a real possibility here.
Yeah. So, sir, I think the question that you raised to the second item on the agenda actually does speak to what potential answers could be to your concern as to what we might be missing in the city center zone itself, as well as the flexibility that you always have, and certainly staff encourages and supports, as well as the planning commission, in terms of trying to address all the needs of the business community. So going back to your original point, and I'll use the example of the private club. I would agree that given the special circumstances, you could have a private club that would be very high-end and fit the city center zone, so I would exclude that possibility. I would say that from the preponderance of experience, not just a, you know, notion of, of what could be or what we see him as, but a preponderance of our experience over time is that you would be more likely in that scenario, probably by a factor of, let's say, you know, 75% or more, just throwing that out there, to not have a high-end entity come in under that, that sort of a business. However, recognizing the fact that it could, it might even be desirable, once again, that's why the process is in place the way it is. Certainly, it's a little bit cumbersome, takes some time, but yes, you know, the council, planning commission, even the staff might come back at some point and recommend a change to that zone again in the future as well. To the question, which I guess might be a little premature for me to comment on, but to the second item, since it is sort of relevant to the discussion here, it certainly is in the city's interest, and by the city, I would define that as both staff and council from an interest standpoint, planning commission, as they consider these sorts of applications to encourage the business community and work with it whenever we can, and we see that what we at least perceive that meets all the goals that we're trying to accomplish, which I'm sure, of course, we all would admit are very complicated and not easy to fulfill at all times and in all places. But because we want to do that, we certainly are willing to bring back recommendations like the, the one that would be going in over there in the former Brisley Plaza.
Mr. Moon Reston?
Thank you, Mayor. I think when this resolution first came out, and again, you know, was, had some emails from some constituents and some talk among us even last week, I think I did the same thing to where it's like you start looking at the uses and saying, oh, does that kind of fit with the vision or doesn't it? And, you know, as I went down through the list and read more about it, I became less and less concerned with the actual, what was, what was on the list, with going back to what is just what we're trying to accomplish through our city center zoning. And so I think, you know, the first thing is, is that we don't want low intensity uses. We want to have true transit-oriented development, and I think we've touted this as being I think we've touted this as being the first real transit-oriented development in the entire state, which calls for intense uses. And so, even to where in our planning session, we talked about the need for a grocery, maybe component to it, I think that those, that they, it's appropriate to add that here because of the low-intensity use of a standalone, just 50% parking lot, 50% or more grocery store within this particular zone. I think the second thing that made me not as concerned with the actual list is what Councilman Buhler mentioned, was just the sheer economics of a lot of these places coming in, in a place that is going to have ever-increasing property values to make it on a low-intensity use or standalone type thing. And to the council members' point about if something high-end came in to just say, you know, Tiffany's or the Pawn Stars move in, selling their pawn shop stuff here, the problem that they still have, and the problem that they would still have come at the city is that we, very thoughtfully and through pain of a current development that came in, have put a height restriction in our city center zone. And so, anything that comes in is going to at least need to be six stories on this side of the street. What is it weighing on the other side of the street? Is it two or three?
I think it's two, minimum. Like, is that right? Three.
So, we need height. And so, you know, I look at a lot of these, and, you know, there's not going to be as much as maybe a great, you know, pawn shop or the world's best lingerie store, you know, comes in, it's going to be three stories high. And so, and even getting into the weeds on what was brought up on, you know, automobile places, you know, a lot of parking lot, and it's, you know, six and three stories tall just probably is not going to happen. And so, you know, I think the good list is, and I know one of the planning commissioners had mentioned, like, I would rather see a list of things that we do want as opposed to a list of things we don't want. And yeah, maybe that would be helpful, but, you know, I think with this is that, like I said, I'm not so concerned about, you know, a lot of the list, just because I think with the goals and the underlying restrictions of the zone is to make it high intensity, high use, and tall buildings. And so, I think having an ordinance for somebody that comes in to say, hey, we've tried to spell out the best we can, you know, some of these things, just so there's no confusion, is fine. And so, I don't have a whole lot of angst really going, you know, one way, you know, or another on this, because I think that if we're standing by the intent of creating a true transit-oriented development that has, you know, high intensity and height with all the buildings, that I think this is just clarification, really.
Councilwoman Lang?
Well, I guess my problem is, in a lot of the transit-oriented developments, we don't want big parking lots. And that's the whole point to this, is getting away from a lot of cars. So, I don't know if we make some of these conditional use with a design standard that restricts their parking lots, so you don't get certain grocery stores that their parking lot is three times bigger than it's really necessary for. And the other thing is, I can see a grocery store on the main level, a fitness center on the next, and I've seen it in other places. So, to rule them out totally, I think is a little harsh. So, I don't know if we need more time to talk about it and see if we can, you know, put some of these in conditional use with high standards and restrictions that make it what we want, so that we're not coming back and piecemealing one item at a time to allow a private club or this or that, and just kind of look forward and not be thinking we're going to do bookwork down the path.
I would raise the issue as well. I guess that this zone, and perhaps I misspoke when I gave the boundaries of that zone, the city center zone. When I said Thirty-Fifth South, it's really north of Thirty-Fifth.
That's right. It's basically one property-ish north of city center, or Thirty-Fifth South.
But it's only from Twenty-seventh down to Thirty-one hundred approximately, or something. So, it raises a question as to how best to handle that other side of the street where there's already a number of existing tenants in that, I guess you'd call them second-tier life cycle stores, where the original tenants have moved on and they've turned and converted into other uses.
So, at least from the existing standpoint, they would be fine under a non-conforming use designation, Mayor, so it's not like they would have to go out of business or anything like that. Really, the question would be, is it applies to this, is what's the future use that would be on those properties after they left, if they left?
But currently, there's nothing on the horizon, because as you've indicated to me, in most of those areas, you can't put anything significant on it, any major, there's just not enough room.
That's correct.
Doesn't go down.
Or largely correct. So, really, where you would be at, even with passage of this ordinance, is fairly pretty status quo, at least for the foreseeable future, until you were able to do projects with potential developers that might assemble larger parcels and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I go along the line of, well, what Councilman Lang said, that the best controls are those which meet a standard that we're trying to achieve, and with the parking limitations. But like the neighborhood grocery, it seems like if we're developing Fairborn Station with these Fairborn Apartments, and you want people to live there, they need to, and it's transit-oriented, yes, they have cars, but you want them to not have to go and get basic necessities. I don't think a dance studio or private club are necessities, but then maybe I'm, you know, different, maybe that's a different lifestyle. But groceries, everybody has to have food. And so, if you really want to make it a walkable community, that's the one that I raised the most question on. But certainly, the concept of how do we best develop this? Is it through restriction of the type of business? And did we forget some? You know, is someone going to come up and say, oh, I'm going to put mine in because it isn't on the list? Or do we do it through saying, if you're going to be here, here are the requirements you have to meet? And you basically eliminate most of these because they can't meet those requirements? Because you want a high-end location, just as in the mall, you don't allow an auto wrecking yard. You know, it just doesn't make sense, and of course, they can't afford it because the land's too expensive. So, I think I go along with Councilman Lang on that. Anyway, Councilman Vincent had a comment.
I just had a question about a piece of property that has recently been developed, the CBS store. Did that fall within the city's center zone, or was that outside?
I think that's outside. Yeah, it's outside.
I was just wondering, because it obviously doesn't meet that height standard.
Right, right.
If I'm not mistaken, isn't that in the other zone that we were talking about on the next agenda item? It's not in that one, or is that...
There is another agenda item that pertains to it.
That's a subdivision item.
It's in the new business, it's a final plat item, if I remember right.
Oh, no, it's the Decker Lake Station overlay zone?
No, that's, yeah, that's a different location. That's just east of two fifteen.
But Brisley Plaza is east.
Well, where's, yes, where's the place he mentioned?
It's just west of Thirty-two Hundred Plaza.
Our Greater Hunter Improvement District was a long time ago.
Okay. I had it in my mind, it was over there, S D, or S P S, but S D.
Councilman Ruston.
You know, the other thing, I think that's, two things that are also important to consider, because I love the grocery store argument, because, as I said in the meeting last time, last week, was that, you see, this is becoming more and more an urban and suburban problem that, you know, residents can't get to. But I think the thing to remember about us is that we, as a city, have taken on the role of being the master developer of this Fairborn project. And so, if Councilmember Vincent, Councilwoman Lang, and two of the four of us say, hey, you know, we want to have a grocery component, then, I mean, I think that's something that we can incorporate into our master plan. The worst-case scenario is, is, you know, we allow a grocery store to come in across the street, and then when we say, hey, we want kind of a little better one to meet what's going on at the residence at Fairborn, you know, the market really won't sustain it at that point, because there's already one there, and there, and over there. And so, I think we have a lot of controls, being the master developer on the Fairborn project, that if those things are important to us, that we're going to have them, you know, regardless. And it really just comes down to a matter of timing, and that, you know, a lot of the cities that we're in here during our National Leagues of Cities things have transit, transit-oriented development, and they're always shocked, because when you go down to Salt Lake, there's not transit-oriented development. And the reason that happened was because everything redeveloped before the Olympics, right before the Olympics, all the new Supercuts and stores and that came in on the tracks line. And so, they're going to still be a good, you know, 20 years out of any transit-oriented development. So, a lot of it's going to be timing. And so, the fact that we're having transition is really sometimes a good thing, because we don't want to have to wait, you know, the 20, 25 years that Salt Lake does of having new stuff sitting on their tracks line and relatively ready to redevelop.
Mayor.
Mr. Pyle.
Just maybe two comments to add and hopefully help the process. First being that, once again, I just want to reemphasize that this is not a normal consideration of process that we would use in, I was going to say most of, but it's really more almost all of the city. We normally would not want to presume, because we might forget, just like the mayor said, you know, some list of prohibited businesses or whatever. Usually, and in almost all cases, would prefer to use some sort of a conditional use type of process or permitted use and not rely on a prohibited use sort of list. And so, once again, I just wanted to reiterate that this is very specific to a very narrow geographic area of the city. Another thing I wanted to also emphasize, that I believe it was Councilman Ruston just said, is, of course, that's right, that the council is the arbiter and in effect, the master developer of the project here. So, if the council wanted to come back at some later, to adopt the ordinance as it is now, and come back later at some point and then change it for particular business use reason, then of course, the council could do that. If the council would like to reexamine the list here and take a little bit more time and not adopt tonight, that's also the council prerogative, absolutely. And even if the council would like to do some shorter version of that with some sort of, you know, very limited modification to it, let's say there were just one or two uses on there that the council felt should be allowed, then you could make that modification as well. So, just again, wanted to emphasize that absolutely, this is a process that you're in control of.
Well, I have a question then, since we had a comment on automobile service. If we didn't pass this tonight, then they can apply for a license there in that situation and actually receive it. Is that correct?
Well, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, Representative Cox presented the scenario under which that could potentially be workable, but that seems to be a stretch of the ordinance and the definition set up. So, I'd want to go back and certainly consult and review that. But at least as I understand it currently, even putting aside the question of whether it's a viable use to put an automobile service use there, which has certainly proved to not be the case for the last 10 years or so, I'm not sure if it would actually fit under our ordinances. I appreciate very much what Representative Cox is trying to do in helping his client and looking for any alternative to be able to make this work. I'm just not sure that that would actually fit.
Councilwoman Lang?
So, I was under the understanding when we were in the process that new application, new business licenses for this area would not be accepted until we moved on this one way or the other. Am I not understanding that correctly?
Let me refer that question back.
Because this process is already started.
So, that's right. So, the way that it works, as you'll recall, is exactly that. When an ordinance is placed, an ordinance change is placed on an agenda, planning commission agenda, state law, then pauses the vesting of an application. If an application is pending, that application goes under the old ordinance. If an application has not yet been made, then that, then we can, as staff, accept applications, but we just put them, we just hold them in abeyance, for lack of a better way to put it, until the decision is made on this ordinance. And I apologize, I'm not sure, as specific to the status that Representative Cox brought his issue, I'm not sure where his application fits in the process, but I can check on that and have an answer for the council. But that's correct, ma'am.
Say, I would just like to hear from Councilmember Vincent, because he was around when the whole Francesco's left and became the Starbucks fiasco building, and then when the Michael's store across the street that was in this left and sat vacant for a number of years, and just his thoughts on, you know, how we avoid those two types of scenarios and try to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here.
Well, I think, I mean, you're right. When, you know, when the Francesco's went away and we ended up, Councilman Lang was on the planning commission at the time, we didn't get what we wanted there. And I think that's largely due to the fact that we didn't have some of these things in place. And so, I think, moving forward, this will allow us, as you mentioned, where we're really being the master developer for this, it allows us the opportunity to really get what we want, to kind of lift this area up and improve it. And with that, I will move for approval of ordinance number fifteen dash three.
Motion is before us. Sir, second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Councilman Ruston has the second. Motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Councilman Vincent?
Might I just make one comment, and it goes back to Councilman Ruston's point, that the city center zones standards are going to largely drive this anyway. And it kind of goes to Councilmember Lang's point as well. The standards that we've developed are probably to drive what comes here anyway, so most of these wouldn't fit under those standards.
And I would just say, speaking to the motion, that if there are council members that feel like there are things that on this should be classified in a different way or worded in a different way, that I think, you know, we're definitely, the discussion is, I don't think over for sure on this. I think there's obviously going to be a lot of tweaks and a lot of different things moving forward. And so, you know, if there's certain uses that, you know, we feel maybe are misclassified or you put a different way, then, you know, I think that's something that we should definitely get on our agendas sooner than later, get this going, get it in the books, and then make it as needed.
Councilman Buhler?
And my, you know, my concern with passing this is just the chilling effect that people that don't come and apply tell us what great things they have planned, because they just look and, oh, well, I can't do it there, so we'll just do it over here instead, we'll just do it in Salt Lake, or Murray, or somewhere else, because West Valley doesn't want this where we want to put it. And I just hope that we would put out through our economic development the word that, you know, we'll listen and we'll act and we're flexible, and we just want to take the nicest of the nice. Nicest of the nice. I'll be right back.
And I would, I would make a comment about passing it if we have reservations. That's kind of hard for me. If you don't believe that it's correct, why would you pass it? You know, there are a couple of items here, and I may not want to rewrite the whole thing, but I have some concerns on the supposition that maybe this will come back, and maybe we will entertain adjustments. I would still be on record as having supported it. So, if I actually do have reservations, I really shouldn't vote for it. That's just me, not trying to speak for anyone else, but that's hard for me to vote for something if I think there are problems. And there seem to be a couple. They may not be major problems, and maybe I could get them resolved fairly quickly, but... Any further call?
I have one. I hope I didn't lead anybody to believe that there's problems with it, or that there's major reservations to it. I think we all have the same goal, and the same goal is to keep, you know, make a low-intensity usage, transit-oriented development, that this is one way of attacking it, and why not move forward on it, unless you have another way of attacking it. And, but if you don't have the goal of, you know, making it a transit-oriented development, you want it to be high, you know, parking lots and intensity, then yeah, you're probably against it. But, you know, this is, this is the proposal, and so, I think it's, you know, some people, you know, skin a deer is one way, and some people skin a deer another way, and this is certainly... And this is certainly a way to skin the deer and get, try to accomplish what we want of the transitory development, but there's probably other ways. But I don't think that there's anything in here that gives me reservations or something that I think is majorly wrong. I just think it's a method and a way to attack what our ultimate goals are.
Councilman Lang.
So one more comment. I still have reservations about passing this as it is, but I know from the Francesco debacle that we haven't always addressed the parking standards in this area. And I think we need to do that this time so that our parking requirement isn't so much parking for a three-story that you can't even fill those stories because you don't have enough parking. So I think parking is another thing we need to address pretty quickly, and I think that will help this out in the long run as well with the who would and who would not come in here. But I still have, the grocery store and the fitness center are still like to hang up and hang those on this one.
Certainly, a substitute motion could be made to pass it with those exclusions. Remember, that's always an option if that's the only thing preventing you. I'm not saying that I want you to do that, I'm just saying you can do it.
We can vote on the one in the order, the maker of the motion wants to adjust it, but...
Further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll place ordinance number 15-03 to amend the municipal code on city center prohibited types of uses. Please say aye. Well, let's see, excuse me, before I do, let's go to the city recorder. I think there's going to be kind of a split, roll call.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
This is Mike.
May.
Mr. Yor.
Aye.
Mr. Q.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Markow?
Yes.
No. Motion or the ordinance passes. And that was five to two. Next, we go to item B on our agenda. This is application ZT-7 2014 filed by Hillcrest Investments requesting a zoning text amendment to the city center zone to allow secondhand stores within 6,000 square feet or less within the Decatur Lake Station overlay zone. And any further introduction needed on that? With that before us then, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and we will accept public input regarding this application. Anyone here to speak to this application?
Mayor Chris Howells, 5320 South, 900 East in Salt Lake City. I represent Hillcrest Investment Company. We're the owners of the shops at Decatur Lake, former Grizzly Plaza. And there are several reasons why we have put forth this tax change amendment. Primary is we signed a lease with Kid2Kid who was residing in the city and had their business in their current location for, I think, about 15 years. When the lease was signed, they came in for a building permit, recognized that the use didn't fit in within the overlay zone, that it was a restricted use. As a landlord, we obviously wanted to try and help out. But in reviewing the overlay zone, obviously, we feel strongly about this change for several reasons, and I'd just like to address those. And one, and listening to the prior discussion was beneficial for this purpose. Kid2Kid and other stores like it that are secondhand stores, which my guess is are probably fairly, are newer than the ordinance may be, really fit in a center like ours. In fact, throughout the state, if you see neighborhood shopping centers, you will tend to see a Kid2Kid in those centers. You'll see a GameStop. There are a lot of very acceptable uses for a shopping center like ours. And so as a landlord, especially where we've just spent several million dollars, well, I don't want to overstate it, we've spent almost $2 million remodeling that shopping center. You obviously want as much flexibility as you can to release it and to retenant it. And this is one particular use that we feel very good about. We certainly recognize the zone, the overlay zone in this special district that we're a part of, and we're grateful to be a part of it. But where we're the only really shopping center in this zone, this particular use fits with this type of shopping center. Not only does it fit with the center, it fits with the types of tenants that we've got. The type of clientele that visit a Kid2Kid or a GameStop or other types of uses really complement the other tenants that exist in that center and really in that special overlay zone. They're the types of people that will go use the East Center as well. And so it's, we feel like it's a win-win. It helps us bring more people into our center. The other, the other, the other types of uses, I think what was in mind and not having been here when this, this, this use restriction was placed are probably for uses that are a lot larger, that typically are found in big box. But under 6,000 feet, it gives us as landlords flexibility to be able to lease to these types of people and also to maintain them because sometimes their, their model changes and they decide, hey, we need a little bit bigger store than we had before. And it allows us to be flexible, but it doesn't eliminate some of those uses. But, you know, there's jewelers, art galleries, sports memorabilia stores, and, and other, GameStop and other types of retailers that really do fit in well with this type of use. And there are some that would probably fall in, in this as well that maybe aren't as attractive. But as a landlord and somebody that has spent that kind of money in keeping that center up, it's very important for us to want to maintain the value of the center and maintain the investment that we've made and also to make it something that's worthwhile for the rest of our tenants. So those are, that's the context behind it. That's, that's why we're here before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. We're in the public comment period, so...
Ask the question.
Oh, you had a question for him, okay.
Mr. Howells, over in that complex, you'll be sharing parking with other tenants?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, they'd be an in-line tenant.
And how many parking spots typically would you need for just this, this business?
Well, our typical ratio is about four per thousand. Is that about right, Merrick?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so it, as far as our parking ratios go at the center, for traditional retail uses, which we would consider this a traditional retail use, it isn't anymore, doesn't place any more of a demand on our parking than, than a regular one, regular use would.
So the existing parking lot is sufficient?
Correct. Yes.
Is this adjacent to like the Wise Guys? Is that where it's at?
It would be on the other side of the center, on the west, the west half.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any others to comment to this?
My name is Merrick Wright. I'm 1390 Ambassador of West Salt Lake City. I'm a real estate broker and represent the Kid2Kid group and originally put them into the shopping center on the northwest corner, northeast corner of 27th South and 35th, 35th South and 27th West about 15 years ago. They have been a tenant in that center since early days, have been through ups and downs along the 35th South corridor, they're working with the mall, have paid sales tax diligently and provided employment for West Valley residents and a resource for people of West Valley City to keep their kids in clothes that have helped them economically. We feel like that this is a very good use and supportive of the citizenry of West Valley City. Hundreds of thousands of dollars are recirculated into the hands of the citizens of West Valley yearly as we buy product from them, then that is then resold to citizenry at a discounted price compared to what they would have to pay for it brand-new. We feel like it helps the community. It's a good draw. We are proven as a high-quality operator. And I think that your support of this change will allow a business that has been a citizen of West Valley City for many years, will allow them to stay near where they have established themselves and not be forced to the periphery. And thank you for your consideration of this and recommend that you make the, approve the change that's been recommended. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion of this discussion and I'll declare that closed. We'll now return back to the council for comment interaction. Councilman Vincent?
A quick question for staff. Now, this is talking about, I mean, the Decatur Lake Station overlay zone, but does that also fall within the city center zone?
No.
Okay, so this, this doesn't apply to the previous ordinance?
No.
That's where I was a little bit confused because there seemed to be some sort of, in the, in the, in the paper, amendment to the city center zone to allow secondhand stores within...
Now, that's where my original confusion came as well, when I read that. I was...
So the issue paper, you're right.
I think I might be missing where the question is. So I'm looking at the title of the ordinance, I don't see any conflict there. And then back in the issue paper, where is it that we're looking at?
Well, actually, even if you look at the agenda.
Yeah, I'm just on, right on, I've got item B open up.
Oh, in the, on the agenda itself?
Yeah.
Okay, let me look back there.
I think the words, my mistake, because both they came down at the same time and I think somehow, yeah, city center party.
Oh, I see, yeah, 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 okay, I see.
I was, I was a bit confused.
Gotcha, yeah.
I didn't think that was in the city center zone until it was too far.
But they're, they're two separate.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Hume? Motion to approve application number ZT-7-2014, which is ordinance number 15-04.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 15-04. That's the action of the council and the ordinance, so. Any further discussion? Councilman Rushton?
Thank you. I'm in favor of not only what the instance that brought this to our attention, but also just the amendment on it. But it does raise, I think, the larger question in my mind, I'm just, the definition that we have of this as a city of the secondhand store. Is it, and we're throwing out the GameStop and some of these other places. I mean, I think maybe the Apple Store is even considered a secondhand store because I've, you know, received a refurbished, you know, case at one point. So, you know, I just think we, with the various different types of business models that there are out there, it might be best to take a look at just exactly the definition of a secondhand store, some that might merit a different classification than what we're at too. Because in my mind, the GameStop is not, I, you know, not, if I was to open the Yellow Pages task of secondhand stores, I don't, you know, I wouldn't see the Apple Store, I wouldn't see the Game Store. But it seems like what we're talking about here is any, anything that resales any previously used product, which may or may not be a problem somewhere else in cities.
Okay, so you're basically just asking us to go back and take a look at any pertinent changes that might make, okay, absolutely.
I mean, to, to Councilman Rushton's point, I mean, you think of secondhand stores, you think of Salvation Army or the Desert Industries, and they're completely different model.
And that is definitely a point that we tried to clarify in the study meeting and earlier conversation, that there certainly are different gradations of what resale of merchandise means, so, point we'll take in. Maybe there is something we could look at in order to relook that definition.
Councilman Rushton? And I think we've tried to accomplish that this by having the square footage, you know, limit, which may or may not be the best way of kind of grouping them, so, that was all.
Seeing no further discussion, then we'll place the motion for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 1504, amending the Decatur Lake Station overlay zone to allow secondhand stores?
Secondhand stores or uses or...
Second, yeah. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously. Ordinance number 1504 is approved. We now move down to item nine on our agenda, and this is ordinance 1505. And this one is amending our ordinance 14-38 regarding the rezoning of property within the city, which we restricted certain rezone applications. And so this particular one would exempt or would amend so that the property which is referred to as a Newton family property would be exempt from our restrictions that we previously established. Is that enough clarity on that? Okay, so we now have this ordinance 1505 before us to the council for comment discussion. Councilman Rushton?
Mayor, I think that, seeing as how this application and this project was in the works previous to our action, previous, our action of ordinance 1438 to restrict certain properties in that, and with the progress that they've made and the certain interest in that, that I would move that we approve resolution 1505.
Motion is before us, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion? Councilman Lang?
So my question is, I would be more comfortable approving this if we had seen the progress that has been made in the new design than just opening up and having months of negotiation. So I personally would rather continue this and kind of see what staff has been shown and see if we're really ready to open, open it up or not. For some reason, I thought we were going to see the design before this got on our regular schedule.
Mayor, may I make some, may I make a comment to that?
Mr. Powell?
So maybe the best way to put this is, when we started this process, we had framed for the council a process by which we were going to go out and work with the developers, the property owners in the city to make the effort to come up with a better and agreed-upon solution for each one of these parcels that we're talking about. If memory serves, there's four of them specifically, as well as, you know, other residential open ground generally. Of the moratorium, the specific to, well, actually, I don't even remember if it's specific to the four, but those were the four that we were trying to focus on. And in accordance with our promise to not make this any longer or make, or any more painful than it had to be for any particular property owner or developer, we had said, once we get through those conversations with the interested parties, we would either bring back to the council at that point some knowledge and discussion as to where we thought we were in agreement and could move, agreement on and could move forward with the development, or that we would release those individual properties from further time restraint under the moratorium just because it would not be necessary any longer. And in this particular property, we have not come to agreement, so to speak, with the developer as to how this, this particular development would work. And in fact, where we're at basically is as far as we can get with the conversation. That should not be interpreted as we have a solution that all parties are in agreement on. So really, what we're looking for specific to this... So really, what we're looking for specific to this entity is really shortening up the moratorium requirement on it.
Councilman Vincent?
So, I guess my, my concern is, if we, if we pass this and they come back with their design and it still doesn't meet our desires, we send them, send them back to the drawing board?
And they're very well aware of that possibility.
But this just allows them at least to come address this.
Yes.
If we don't do this, then they don't, they don't get to come and make a presentation.
That's right.
Yeah.
Councilman Rushton?
With that, I, you know, I've seen posted on, about planning website of the city's actual concept plan, and there are things that I really like about it, and there's things that I'm looking forward to hearing your input on that maybe I don't like so much, but I kind of feel like if we open it up, we just get the ball rolling as opposed to, you know, waiting a couple months.
Well, I have some comments. Well, I'm a little confused, you know, I didn't understand as, and I don't know if you meant to countenance this way, that we were ending into an agreement with the city that you would do certain things. I thought the council had given some directions specifically on issues they were concerned about on these four properties, and that the city was going to come back and give us some information. Basically, I don't think I've seen that information.
We have, and so the supposition is correct, Mayor, in its, in its beginning form, and we have briefed from time to time, the council on progress, ongoing conversations with the property owner, the developer, and it was certainly our intent that the purpose of those conversations with all parties was to hopefully be able to facilitate an actual agreement and solution that everybody would be happy with. However, I think we did put the asterisk on those conversations at the beginning that we didn't know for sure. We would make our best effort to that end, but we didn't know that we would be able to accomplish all ends there, so.
Well, with that understanding, though, the understanding was, I thought, that we would get something back, and if we're now going to do this piecemeal, what was the purpose of the moratorium?
Purpose of the moratorium, again, was to enable us to be able to go and hold those conversations with all interested parties and not be forced in any position that the council didn't want to be in, or that we from the staff would recommend, or, you know, there could be other issues along that. It's important to keep in mind, once again, that council controlled that process before, and certainly the moratorium was not taking away anybody's rights, nobody was at a point where they were able to even come forward with an application that looked like it would move forward, because it would have taken rezoning, for example, action on the council's standpoint or part. It was simply a mechanism by which hopefully we could facilitate that process, and it may still work in those three other entities, projects they have. With this particular project, we're not there, which is the bottom line, so there's no purpose of holding them up through the rest of the six-month moratorium, as opposed to letting them come back to you with their own application.
Now, yeah, and I can only go by what's on here, and there's certainly not very much on here. For our council agenda, there are two documents.
That, yeah, that's.
So, I guess I'm supposed to vote now, not knowing what it is, is this, this almost like one of those trust-me ordinance?
No, not at all. They're not moving forward with permission to do anything.
Well, we're taking them off the list so that they can come back with a proposal.
Which you will then hear. Whereas right now, you wouldn't hear it until April.
And, and so I'm looking for, what's the problem you're solving?
Our promise to the council and the developers and the property owners, back when we started the moratorium, was we would take these conversations as far forward as was feasible, and then at the point where we felt like there could be no further progress, either because we came to agreement with the property owner, or because there were still issues to be resolved, we would then end those entities' participation in the moratorium. So our promise was to make that process as short as possible for them. That was our promise as staff, once again, I keep using that word, but that was our promise to both you as an elected body and the developers that were participating in it.
There were a couple of wanted comments, Mr. Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, I still think we expect staff to come back with a, with a plan that would be the end of the moratorium, and I still think that's the expectation that we'll see that. But they have a developer that doesn't want to wait for that. You know, the developer is driving this, not the staff, and the staff is still, I assume, is still working towards the, the end of coming to a document that they can bring to us that would take care of, you know, not just these four properties, but the other properties we've put under the moratorium, but just what happens if this developer doesn't want to wait till the staff comes up with that document, and they're going to roll the dice and see if we'll, see if we'll go with it.
Well, that's not something new, they weren't in favor of it at start.
Right, right. So they're taking a risk. I mean, it's the developer that's taking the risk.
Well, what's the risk?
That we'll say no.
Okay, so we say no, they just go back to drawing boards and start again?
Right.
Or they don't go forward.
Or they wait till the staff comes back with the full document.
Okay. I think next was Councilman Rushton?
I'll just say that, you know, it's good because it's, it's, I think the lesson we learned, or hopefully we learned, off of another development in the city is that there's the, there's the meet with staff, meet with people to kind of brew up ideas and regulations, and then there's the formal action that takes place in the meeting. I would be highly skeptical if these guys came back and said, here's the houses we're going to build, here's all of this we're going to build, and it not be in a formalized setting, because I don't know if I want to go down the road again of kind of, oh yeah, I love that, and I love those colors, and I love those trees, and I love those houses, to where, you know, if that was kind of included in this bring us back, I don't know, A, how helpful, or B, just how appropriate it would really be to have that information at this point.
Councilwoman Lang?
Corey said it beautifully.
You could probably said it better, though.
Well, and I just think staff has moved as far forward at getting at what we directed them to try and get out of this property, as the developer's willing to move, so we just need to listen to their proposal and either accept it or deny it, and that's the dice they're rolling right now, as the developer.
Counsel?
Right, I was just going to say that, as I understand it, they've kind of tired of talking to our staff and think they can win with us, and.
They may or they may not.
No, we didn't pass their zone change before. We may this time, and we may not this time, and if we do, then they can proceed with development, if we don't, then they're kind of back to square one.
Clarification, aren't they at square one now?
At square one, with their foot over square two.
Actually, actually, no, they think they're 100%, that's why they want to come back.
Well, they thought they were 100%.
And they think they are, yeah.
I think there's a chance.
I don't know, maybe they're right. Well, okay.
Now we're two months.
Where they're coming? Well, the motion is before us. Seeing no further discussion, we'll place the motion for a vote. All in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. No, inconsistent. Motion passes six to one. Now, we go on to our resolutions. Resolution fifteen dash fourteen to approve a cooperative agreement with UDOT. This is the relocation of a signal pole as a part of that 2400 South, 5600 West project. I think this one was pretty straightforward, it's just moving that up to that next intersection that will be there in the future. So with that, to the council. Mayor? Councilman Morton?
Move for approval of resolution fifteen dash fourteen.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Diller, the second. Motion is properly before us, any further discussion? And I remind those listening in or those here that these are items that we have talked about in previous meetings, so this is the final hearing, I guess I would call it, we assume it may be, if it passes. Those in favor of approving resolution fifteen dash, excuse me, fifteen dash fourteen with UDOT for the relocation of the signal pole, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passed unanimously. Resolution fifteen fourteen is approved. Resolution fifteen fifteen, this is to approve an agreement with JUB Engineers. This is for professional services in connection with the Metro Business Park Pond renovation project, a pond that is in a sad state of repair and really in need of a lot of things, so this is to get that underway, to start looking at how that can be fixed and improved. So, that's the issue, to the council.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Lang?
I would move for approval of resolution fourteen, fifteen dash fifteen.
Motion before us, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Hune has a second, motion properly before us, do we have any further discussion? Councilman Vincent?
I'm in favor of this because it's too big of a project for Kelly Simper.
And for those listening in, that was called an inside joke. You have to be here to understand. Further discussion, seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution fifteen dash fifteen, the engineering agreement for the Metro Business Park Pond renovation project, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously, the resolution is approved. Resolution fifteen dash sixteen, to adopt our state legislative agenda for 2015, and there are a few items there in general, but it identifies those things that we have asked our lobbyists to work on and our staff to support in general terms. You have reviewed that, any further comments there? Then we'll go to the council for comments or action. Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, move for approval of resolution fifteen sixteen.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman, Councilwoman Lang has the second. Properly before us, further discussion, seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution fifteen dash sixteen, adopting our state legislative agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have resolution fifteen dash seventeen, and this is to adopt our federal legislative agenda for this coming year, and so I'll just put that before you for calm interaction.
Mayor, I approve approval of resolution fifteen dash seventeen.
Councilman Rushton has motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Diller, the second, motion properly before us, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving our federal legislative agenda, resolution fifteen dash seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously, the resolution is approved. Next, we have resolution fifteen dash eighteen, this is to ratify city manager's appointment of Carol Hunter and Tom Alder as members of the Utah Cultural Celebration Center Foundation Committee, and we've had an opportunity to review those background biographical type sketches of some sort, and so this will place them, if approved, on that committee.
Motion to approve resolution fifteen dash eighteen.
Councilman Hune has the motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Norfeldt has the second. Motion is properly before us, any further discussion?
We're going to see a movie about them?
Seeing no further discussion, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of resolution fifteen dash eighteen, approving the city manager's appointment of Carol Hunter and Tom Alder to the, the Cultural Celebration Center Foundation Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passed unanimously, the resolution is approved. Next, we go to item eleven on our agenda, this is application S twenty-nine, twenty-thirteen, filed by Brad Bird, for final plan approval for Stonebridge Commercial Park subdivision at 4100 West Links Drive. And if I remember correctly, that was, yeah, there it's up before us, you see the location generally, and again, items that we have previously discussed, and there it is before. Anything further we need to do to introduce this one?
So perhaps, yeah, the Jermaine pointed this, Mayor, is originally, we had a two-lot subdivision proposal, and this would divide it into four.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. I couldn't see the lines there and I couldn't remember which.
Yeah, I apologize, so I didn't tell Jake which one to pull up and.
Yeah, it's not the projector, we were probably, it's right there. Even with these, so with that introduction to the council for calm interaction. Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, move for approval of application S twenty-nine, two thousand thirteen.
We have a motion for an approval, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lang has the second, it's properly before us, further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of application S twenty-nine, twenty thirteen, for a final plan approval for property at 4100 West Links Drive, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously, the application is approved. Next, we have application S twenty, twenty fourteen, filed by Leslie Morton, for final plan approval for CBS West Valley Plaza subdivision at 3200 West, 3500 South. I believe they're actually going to try and get that one up, too, and they're working on it to get it a little bigger. And this is where the new CBS pharmacy is, they've now obtained some additional property there, and so that is being revised, and I believe that that's now, that'll be two parcels of property with the addition of this second piece that was out on the corner. So that is the application that is before us, to the council for further calm interaction.
Motion to approve application number S dash twenty, S twenty fourteen.
Councilman Hune has the motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Rushton has the second, it's properly before us, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, place it for a vote. All in favor of approving application S twenty, twenty fourteen, the final plan approval for the CVS subdivision, West Valley Plaza subdivision, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously, the application is approved. Next, we have application number S twenty-one, twenty fourteen, filed by Sammy Malisovic, final plan approval for the Argus subdivision at 4390 South, 4000 West. And I have a note here that I didn't notice before for continues, no, that was just something else.
Next slide.
Oh. Oh, there it is, yeah, I couldn't see that, it was kind of written over that, sorry. Then, and I'm trying to recall this one, Mr. Powell, you're going to have to help me here, what are we doing there?
Okay, let me take a look here, so 40th West and 4390 South, this is another final plan approval, as you mentioned, Mayor, is the Argus subdivision, and again, we are also dividing what was one lot into another lot, so there'll be a total of two, which will allow for another single-family dwelling.
And in fact, this was the one where there's currently. And in fact, this was the one where there's currently a structure on there that's going to be torn down, a barn-like structure.
I can't remember what the structure is. Garage, there you go.
Yeah, garage or something, and they were, and they're going to then subsequently build another single-family home.
Correct.
That is property presented now, I think, so to the council for calm interaction.
Mayor, move for approval of application S twenty-one, twenty fourteen.
We have the motion to approve by Councilman Bueller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Yoon. The property before us, further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving application S twenty-one, twenty fourteen, final plan approval for the Argus subdivision at 4390 South, 4000 West, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The application is approved. Now we go to number D, here and consider an appeal of the city manager's denial of a grammar request from Holly Zegenhorn.
Zegenhorn, yes, very close.
Okay. On this one, though, I'm going to turn to Mr. Pyle for comments and introduction.
Thank you, sir. As I had given the heads up to the council earlier, we may not need to have this hearing, but in the meantime, we'd like to continue with two weeks while our city attorney consults with Ms. Zegenhorn on some questions she had. This is acceptable to Ms. Zegenhorn. We talked to her earlier, and so as you, as obviously you can see, she's not here this evening, and she was okay with us moving it forward, assuming that that was also okay with the council.
Thank you for the introduction. To the council for calm interaction.
Motion to continue.
Have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Councilman Vincent and Councilwoman Lang. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of continuing this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously. It's continued. We come to essentially the end of our agenda. Now, we need a little clarification here because we do need an executive session, but we have the redevelopment agency hearing. And so how do we do that if there's an intervening meeting?
So if we could make a motion to.
Okay.
Motion, I guess, with the. Or, yeah, hold the executive session after the RDA meeting, then we can move to the RDA meeting and that business as quickly as possible, then come back.
Okay. Then I just need a motion then to hold an executive session for the purposes of hearing pending litigation and second for personnel.
And professional competency.
And professional competency. So to the council.
Mayor, I move that following the RDA hearing, we reconvene an executive session to hear, discuss pending litigation and professional competency.
Motion is properly before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Rushton has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place this motion for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously. So I guess then we're done with our business and.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.
I hereby call to order this special meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. Note that all members of the RDA board are present, and we have one item of business tonight, which is in the form of a resolution that will ask the CEO, Mr. Pyle, to introduce for us, please.
Thank you, sir. So we are considering redevelopment action and/or economic development action in a particular area along Redwood Road from roughly 4100 South and to the Redwood Drive-In on the north end of that area. One of the initial steps to that is authorizing a urban renewal survey area, which actually was completed in December of 2013, but not carried through for various reasons at the time, and we'd like to reauthorize the carrying out of that survey area, the definition of it and carry out the study.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or clarifications, any information you need before taking action on this item? Not a motion would be in order. Mr. Vincent.
Move for resolution fifteen oh one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution fifteen oh one. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, we'll call the question and ask all those in favor of adopting resolution fifteen oh one to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Seeing no other business, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
This body stands adjourned.